Off a day, the Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture is now called to order. Today is Tuesday, December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. The time is three fourteen P M. Notices for this virtual oversight hearing were disseminated via email to all senators and all main media broadcasting outlets on Monday, December sixth, and again on Friday, December tenth, two thousand and twenty-one. The notice was also published in the Guam Daily Post on those same days. This Zoom meeting is hosted by the Legislature's A D staff and committee staff. I thank them for their assistance. And the host of the hearing will mute all Zoom participants until called upon by the chair. Individuals testifying shall first be recognized by the chair before speaking and begin by stating their name for record-keeping purposes. When called to speak, please ensure that you are unmuted. Prior to the start of this hearing, all agency personnel were sworn under oath by the Guam Legislature Sergeant-at-Arms. I'd like to acknowledge the presence of my colleagues, beginning with Senator Delina Nelson, Senator Teletitigui, Senator Sabina Perez, and Senator Joanne Brown. I'd also like to acknowledge the presence of the Guam Memorial Hospital Board of Trustee members, beginning with the chairperson Teresa Obispo. Member Sarah Thomas Nedita, who is also the Secretary of the Board. Member Gwyneth Almonte, who's a trustee. Are there any other trustees present? All right, I'd like to also acknowledge the presence of Senator Amanda Shelton, our Legislative Secretary. For the record, I'd like to name the other board members who are not present. Those are Melissa Wybell, she's the Vice Chairman, Byron Everisto, Sharon Davis, I think her confirmation or reconfirmation is pending, Sonia Silyang, Dr. Michael Um, Evangeline Allen. So we also, I'd like to acknowledge the presence of the Guam Memorial Hospital's executive team. And if Miss, the Administrator and C E O, Ms. Lillian Perez Basadis, could please introduce her team.
Okay, yes, good afternoon. Members of our executive team who work alongside me with the, in my role as hospital administrator. I am Mr. Kandu on my left side, he is the Chief of Operations. Dr. Annie Bredalio, she is the Chief Medical Officer. Dr. Jolene Augen, Associate Administrator of Clinical Services. Yuka Hetchenova, she is our Chief Financial Officer. Danielle Manglornia, she is our Compliance Administrator, Chief of Compliance and Regulatory. Don Rabinal, he is the Assistant Administrator of Administrative Services. Belwada is the Assistant Administrator of Professional Services. Christine DeCaro, she is our Chief Nursing Officer. Lizelle Concepcion, she is the Deputy Chief of Nursing Services. I have, I'm not sure if Dr. Vincent Duennius is in Zoom, but he is our Medical Director and Acting Administrator of SNF. He is part of our executive team. Mr. Jeffrey Ventura, he is our Chief Hospital Emergency Preparedness Planning. And he is also the Incident Commander since we entered into this COVID pandemic. And also Ms. May Habib, Communications and Marketing Director. This is our executive team, Madam Chair.
Madam Speaker. Thank you very much. So today, we will be conducting an oversight hearing on the Guam Memorial Hospitals. We had asked specifically in regards to vacancies, hiring to include limited-term personnel, service contracts, above-step recruitment, and raises for fiscal year two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one, and two thousand and twenty-two. The hearing was scheduled following numerous concerns raised via, through the committee and community members about recent additional hiring of above-step positions, petitions for creation of positions, petitions for amendments to positions at the hospital, and whether these were critical at this time. While the hospital continues to struggle to recruit critically-needed nurses, medical specialists, and other health professionals, and retain those currently onboard. The Board of Trustees was invited to this hearing because it is the duty of the Board of Trustees pursuant to ten G C eight zero one zero nine subsection N to adopt the rules and regulations governing the selection, compensation, promotion, performance evaluation, disciplinary action, and other terms and conditions of employment affecting personnel subject to the triple A law. It says that such rules and regulations shall provide for the employment and retention of persons on the basis of merit, and shall include an orderly and systematic method of recruitment and the establishment of the list of qualified applicants for employment purposes. Except that compensation for non-medical personnel shall remain consistent with compensation plans and pay scales as determined by the Civil Service Commission or its successor. Non-medical personnel are defined as personnel employed by the authority who are not physicians, nurses, medical technicians, or technologists, licensed or certified therapists of any sort, laboratory technicians, personnel certificated in any medical or nursing field, nurse practitioners, pharmacists, or other medical personnel. And then it talks about peer review. The Board was also invited because, under the laws governing above-step recruitment and the laws governing creation of new positions, it is the duty of the Board to approve such petitions through resolutions. We have heard recently, or over the past couple of years, that the GM Guam Memorial Hospital, the Board of Trustees, voted to extend another twenty-five percent working differential pay to employees certified or licensed in rehabilitation, radiology, dietary, and special services. Prior to this, the Board had authorized differential pay for nurses, respiratory therapists, and lab workers. And is my understanding that this is all to sustain current staff and be competitive as COVID-nineteen taxes, hospital personnel, resources throughout the nation. According to one article, this is, this differential pay is just the second part of four planned actions to address pay and rightsizing the Clinical Services Division, according to Dr. Jolene Augen. In July, the Board also passed a resolution to create the position of telemedicine technician. At that time, telemedicine was only being used in ICU from Friday to Sunday, and there were plans to expand shifts and specialties and outpatient telemedicine services with urgent care. And all of these above-stated, I believe, are good news for the hospital. So the recruitment and retention of nurses and medical specialists and other medical professionals have been longstanding challenges for this hospital, preceding this particular Board, and the challenge of many Boards prior to them. We were, last updated, that G M H was not able to conduct a comprehensive wage study to investigate all salary levels at the time. Partly, of course, due to the pandemic. We know that G M H has spent about twenty million to fund travel nurses in the two years to cover critical shortages during the pandemic, and that FEMA reimburses the hospital for these costs. The reimbursement doesn't necessarily come immediately. So we're concerned, of course, about impacts to the hospital's ability to pay other bills and staff. And the ability to continue to recruit doctors, specialists, and critically-needed supplies impacted by any delays in reimbursement from FEMA. So on November nineteenth, for my colleague's information, we requested from G M H particular information. This was on November nineteenth. We requested a report be submitted in advance of the hearing relevant to the oversight focus and specifically position-related petitions to include justifications during F Y two thousand and twenty and F Y two thousand and twenty-one to date, records showing approval of such petitions, all Board or G M H policies on hiring above-steps, and the G G ones for the above-step hires during this period. A listing of all vacancies for each quarter in F Y two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one, and two thousand and twenty-two, and whether said positions are still being recruited, or if funding was pooled to provide for other, for above-step positions or other purposes. Yesterday, we received a large set of documents from Guam Memorial Hospital without any summary of those documents. Those documents have been provided to the senators. We received that just prior to the close of business yesterday. Prior to the hearing, the committee reviewed the Guam Memorial Hospital website to locate the petitions for above-step recruitment amendments to position, creation of position, the petitions for creation of positions. But we were not able to locate the petitions themselves, although we'll talk about later what are the other documents that are involved. We also reviewed all the minutes from two thousand and twenty-one to see if any new movement as to these positions. And we reviewed our legislative communications and messages where we received messages from G M H to see whether the Board resolutions had been transmitted approving the creation of positions and the above-step recruitments. On the G M H A website, resolutions from two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty are available, but we were unable to find resolutions from two thousand and twenty-one. They were not under the same tab. We were also not able to find the petitions themselves. And in the two thousand and twenty-one transmittals to the Legislative Secretary and the Speaker, there were media releases in regards to the creation of new positions and the above-step recruitments, but the petitions themselves were not part of those documents. And I'd also like to take a pause here and acknowledge the presence of Senators Christopher Duennius and Senator Frank Bloss, and also Board of Trustee member Sharon Davis. Thank you for being with us today. Because we'll begin with our first item on the agenda, which is vacancies. Just wanted to know if you could give us an overall number of the current vacancies for critically-needed nurses, medical specialists, and other medical professionals. So beginning with nurses.
Madam Chair, can I, can I just, you know, have an opportunity to do, to open this, you know, this oversight hearing from my perspective as the administrator? And then we can, you know, proceed. We do have a PowerPoint presentation prepared that will delineate and clarify and provide you more information with regards to the above-step recruitment that we've completed, and we've processed with regards to vacancies, with regards to the L T As. You know, we can do that, but I'd like to have an opportunity to provide you with an opening statement from my perspective as hospital administrator.
May I? Well, is there a reason why the PowerPoint was not submitted to us in response to our letter? We had asked for all of this information prior to the hearing so that we could also send it to the senators and try to understand all of this massive information.
Absolutely.
The documents instead, and the PowerPoint just a few minutes ago.
Absolutely, Madam Chair. We are doing, taking care of patients, and so in between, we were tweaking, we were putting our PowerPoint through our presentation together, and you know, and that takes time. And so I apologize that we submitted it late to you, but we wanted to provide you with a product that is factual, that is true, that is accurate and complete. And so you have that now with you, we can, and we can share it also on the screen. But I'd like to, you know, have a few minutes to just present my opening statement, if I may.
All right, I will allow that, but if you could just, I'm looking through the PowerPoint, and I see you're going to talk about in detail the above-step recruitment and creation of some new positions, but can you talk first about vacancies?
I will get to that, but Madam Chair, I really would like to give you an opening statement. Please allow me that.
Sure.
See that courtesy.
Proceed.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Speaker Theresa Tarahi, Chairwoman of the thirty-sixth Guam Legislature Committee on Health, Tourism, Historic Preservation, Land, and Justice, Senators and Members of this committee. Thank you for inviting us to this oversight hearing, as it is certainly a great opportunity for the G M H A governance, the G M H A executive leadership, and the legislative leadership to continue the open dialogue and working relationships, especially in terms of strengthening and synchronizing our collective effort in meeting the healthcare needs of the people of Guam. And if I may take it a step further, it is inherent in our leadership roles to invest in our talented human resources for our island's future. My name is Lillian Basadis, and I'm here before you as the hospital administrator. And as the hospital administrator of Guam's only public hospital, I am honored to represent the staff, both clinical and non-clinical G M H A. They are the heart of G M H A, whether their job titles are Administrative Assistant, Office Support Staff, Work Clerks, Patient Couriers, Nurses' aides, Technicians, Dietary Staff, Environmental and Housekeeping Staff, Medical Records, Patient Registration, Patient Safety, Risk Management, Security Guards, Employee Health, Infection Control, Informatics, Information Technology, Facilities Maintenance, Human Resources, Cellphone Operators, Billers and Coaters, Accounting Payroll, Materials and Procurement, Professional Support Staff, Compliance and Regulations, and of course, doctors and nurses. They're all the heart of G M H A, and I am very grateful for and proud of their commitment and service to our mission, and that is to provide excellent care in a safe environment. And despite the aging facility with the myriad of challenges to keep the facility functional and operational, we, until we build a new hospital, every day our staff show up for work, and they perform their jobs with courage, with perseverance, with professionalism, with integrity, and resilience. And I want to also introduce Ms., an up-and-coming, very talented leader, Ms. Karen Guzman, who's been holding the office of our H R as Acting H R Administrator. We're here to answer your questions, clarify concerns and misinformation with regard to the hospital's hiring practices, especially, as stated in your letter and noted for this oversight hearing, the bus step hiring. And yes, we provided your office, Madam Speaker, with a thumb drive that contains about four thousand copies and documents of G G one documents for all above-step hires and justification of these above-step hires, the limited term appointments known as L T As, the pay raises, the personnel service agreements, and vacancies. And I apologize that we did not put a cover letter to all those documents. And so lessons learned, we'll make sure we do that in the future. And I'd like to begin also by clarifying the media article that was aired on November seventeen, wherein the article claimed that G M H A hired sixteen individuals at a bus step recruitment, step ten. The article also stated that we will hire some individuals at step eighteen for the Certified Nurse Assistant, one and two positions. The article further stated, "And just this month, G M H A petitioned for a bus step recruitment for medical quota one, G M H A recruited the individual at step eighteen. G M H A also petitioned for a medical quota two, but recruited at step eighteen." And for the record, Madam Speaker and Senators, that article was erroneous and a sham. And I want to also show the evidence that we responded to that release, that news release, correcting all that false information, the false news, that we hired on a bus step for Hospital Marketing and Communications Director at step ten. Incorrect, we hired that individual at step seven. The second false news, we hired a hospital-certified nurse assistant at step eighteen. Again, incorrect, we did not hire a nurse assistant at step eighteen, or nurse assistant two at step eighteen. Another false news, the above-step recruitment for Food and Beverage Manager at step ten. Untrue, we hired that individual at step two. The fourth false news is that we hired a program coordinator for the capital improvement project that we were trying to make sure we carried through what the Army Corps engineer identified as what we needed to correct and fix and repair. We didn't hire that individual at step ten, we hired that individual at step five. Fake news number five, we hired a respiratory care tech, equipment technician at step ten. Untrue, we did not hire that individual at step ten, we hired that individual at step three. The sixth false news is that we hired a program coordinator three for emergency health record. By the way, it's not emergency health record, it's electronic health record. We did not hire that individual at step ten, we hired that person at step five. Another false news is that we hired a program coordinator four for fiscal at step ten. We did not hire that individual at step ten, it was at step seven. False news number eight, we hired a hospital chef supervisor at step ten. We did not do that, we hired that individual at step two. False news number nine, we hired a deputy assistant for operations. We created that position, and that we hired that individual at step eighteen. Untrue, we did not hire at step eighteen. False news number ten, hired an Assistant Administrator of Operations, jumping from step one to step eighteen. Again, untrue, it was not, we did not hire that individual at step eighteen. And then the eleventh false news is that we hired a medical quota, medical quota one at step eighteen. That again is untrue. So I just wanted to show for the record, Madam Chair, that that information that was put out was very untrue. In the same media article, a statement was emphasized that in one breath, we're trying to prioritize the recruitment of nurses, specialists, and other medical professionals, and then we hire a bus step for other less critical position. That's clearly a fallacy, a misunderstanding. We have and we continue to hire nurses and other qualified healthcare professionals using their bus step recruitment mechanism. As soon as our H R staff received the applications of these individuals, they reviewed the application packet for completeness, read the application, determined if the applicant qualifies for the position, scheduled the interviews, and go on and so forth with the process. Once the applicants are selected and we offer the job to the selected applicant, we negotiate a reasonable salary based on the selected applicant's credentials, experience, exceptional qualifications, specialty skills, training, and recruitment difficulty. One of the biggest blocks, roadblocks in using the above-step recruitment tool is the hiring of brand-new nurses. We have no option but to hire these freshly graduated nurses who are just starting their nursing careers as novice nurses at an entry level step one. That's one of the biggest challenges. These novice nurses are hired at a much higher salary than the entry-level step-one salary we offer, because we cannot hire them at a bus step. These brand-new nurses do not have the years of experience to qualify for their above-step recruitment in accordance with our enabling statutes. Unless they have at least one year of experience, then the most we can offer them is step two. The second point I'd like to make with regard to the comment that we hire a bus step for less critical positions, it's a micro insult. To cast a judgment that the less critical positions are not deserving or not worthy of an above-step salary is demoralizing. To not appreciate and recognize and support and value these individuals what they contribute to the day-to-day services we provide at the hospital is what we call micro insult. These employees are fulfilling critical and essential functions and tasks in a hospital organization with all its complexities and rapidly-changing healthcare, medical, and patient care regulations and standards. There are no positions that are less critical. Every position, every employee is valued as critical and essential. This is clearly made evident during the pandemic. Doctors, nurses, and other clinical staff are exhausted and burning out. If we do not continue to recruit the additional non-clinical support staff at a salary commensurate to their job specifications that will help the clinical staff carry out their jobs at the bedside, we will lose more clinical staff. Madam Speaker and Senators, before we walk you all through our PowerPoint presentation, and before we begin the discussion on the vacancies, I'd just like to close my opening statement with this testimony. As a registered nurse with over forty years of experience in clinical, academic, leadership, and management, I take my nursing profession very passionately and seriously. In my current role as the hospital administrator, one of my main goals and mission is to take our only public hospital to a higher level of excellence, a higher level of performance by investing in our staff, because we, when we invest in our staff, their motivation, their performance, and their satisfaction levels increase. It gives the men and women who devote their lives and talents to the hospital a deeper meaning and a stronger purpose to continue working with us. These are investment strategies that I believe will help us retain our employees, at the same time transform this hospital into an institution, an organization where, wherein other talented individuals will be attracted and enticed to come and be employed with us. And for the patients, my goal, and I'm certain my Board and executive members agree, is to assure all who enter the hospital will feel welcomed, confident, and trust that the men and women of G M H are here to serve them, to care for them, and at the times, proxy as family support, especially when the patients are scared, are worried, and perhaps dying, and that they're not alone in a hospital room. And also, if I may respectfully state, in the spirit of transparency, and for the record, Madam Speaker and Senators, our transparency center of our website, the staffing pattern is updated monthly. That information is available regarding vacancies, pay increments, and above-step hires of new employees. It's there, available. So now, we can begin our discussion on the vacancies, is what you want, is what you request, but we can start with our point that will show.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Basadis, and to the staff that prepared all of that. I just want to remind you, so all the documents, including your response to the media, they've been provided to the senators. Your response to me has been provided to the senators. The PowerPoint that we received a few minutes before the hearing, that's also been provided to the senators. And we've got about one, two, three, four, five, six, maybe seven or eight senators right now logged in, and I want to be able to get to their questions as well. This is an oversight hearing, so it's mainly intended for us to ask questions and to get answers. And hopefully, everyone's been keeping up with the news and is able to, to, you know, get to very specific questions. But yeah, if you could begin, I'd like to know, you know, we want to know, what are the critical vacancies, including, beginning with nurses? What is your current amount of vacancies for nurses?
Chair, do you have that number? Our last percentage was, I think, seven percent vacancy rate.
What are the numbers?
They are, our last staff numbers were two hundred and seventy-four, I believe, of nurses. That does not include the twenty-sixth administrative nurses. We are filling our needs.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, who is speaking? I need to see and identify who's speaking at all times, if we can.
Good afternoon, Speaker Tarahi, this is Christine DeCaro, Administrator of Nursing Services. Our last vacancy rate that we saw was seven percent for nursing services. We currently have about two hundred and seventy-four full-time staff nurses, and that does not include twenty-six administrative nurses. We are temporarily filling our staffing needs with seventy-seven travel nurses at this time.
So that the seven percent is how many?
I don't have that number, I can get back with you, but it should equal to the amount of about the travel needs that we are filling right now.
So they're all filled right now with, if we add the travel nurses, because it's two seventy-four, that will be your total of positions?
Just about, yeah.
All right, thank you. And what about medical specialists?
Okay, what do you mean by medical specialists?
Pardon? Yes.
Okay, all righty, and these are internal medicine?
So Madam Speaker, this is Dr. Bredalio. A lot of our medical staff is, are not positioned. So we, they are not employees. We do, we have a lot of independent contractors. So we have about a hundred doctors on contracts of a variety of different specialties. And they, some of our departments are run by employee physicians or hospitalists, whether they're G G ones, or whether we have independent contracts. So those numbers on the website are only those that are employees. And that really is. and that really is, it does not make up the majority.
All right. Are there any vacancies?
Well, we have, out of the forty, we have fourteen vacancies.
For physician specialists?
Not, well, specialist is for physicians. They're, they're all, they have different specialties.
All right. And what, are there any other medical vacancies?
We have, right, right, in terms of clinical or medical? Medical, are you referring to physicians or medical services?
Well, we just talked about physicians, so medical services. What, I'm trying to define them as defined by statute of, they are defined, non-medical and medical personnel. So if we could just go with these terms, it says non-medical, I mean, are not physicians, nurses, medical technicians, technologists, certified therapists, laboratory technicians, personnel certified in medical or nursing field, nurse practitioners, pharmacists, and medical personnel. So what vacancies do you have for those positions? Those medical positions that sit there?
Well, both of those will be your professional support.
Support, right. We can let, yeah, we can let Belle go ahead and introduce yourself.
Good afternoon, Madam Speaker. My name is Belle Rada. And for professional support, which comprise several departments like radiology, pharmacy,
Respiratory.
Respiratory, laboratory, special services,
Dietary.
Dietary, and physical therapy. Physical therapy that we have. So I would say for the total, I would say about ten percent for all, if you include all the departments, because most of them has like three percent, five percent. So for the entire professional support, I would say about ten percent.
You also have like echocardiogram.
Yeah, that's for the special services, the echocardiogram technology.
So you're saying ten percent for all other medical services, including the special services? Okay. Ten percent. Do you know the number? That, how many physicians that is?
For, if I may, let me just do my calculation. I would say about thirty-five for all the, our departments.
Thirty-five, okay.
Correct.
All right, thank you. All right. And I would now move to the above step recruitments. I wanted to cite the statute, but I think I will allow you to present your PowerPoint in this regard, or, or yours starts off not with above step recruitments, but, well, yes, I guess. Okay, let's talk about above step recruitment. If you could tell us, yeah, the numbers of your above step recruitment. I, I wanted to just read the statute for my colleagues, if that's okay. It's very quick. Six two oh five of Title Four says, "Step one of the pay grade assigned to a classified position shall be the regular rate for initial employment in any department or agency. The appointing authority or the head of an agency may petition that the agency department or public corporations governing Board or Commission recruitment at a higher step, not to exceed step ten because of documented recruitment difficulty or exceptional qualifications. Petition shall be posted on the agency's website for ten days. Petition shall be made before an applicant is hired. Every petition shall be scrutinized and amply justified before being approved." And this is by the board, and the the governing board may establish policies to administer to section increment schedule consisting of steps eleven through twenty shall not be used for recruitment above step. All right, please proceed.
We're not able to share our PowerPoint, Madam Chair. We're locked out.
All right. Sure, so if you could allow, share who? Is it going to be on the same screen?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Madam Speaker, the four GCA sixty-three, sixty-two oh five legislation, enabling legislation that you just cited. From that, the Board of Trustees in two thousand and eight approved a resolution that then allows the hospital administrator, the CEO, the authority from the governing body, the Board of Trustees, delegated the hospital administrator, CEO, to then approve or disapprove any above step requests, petitions. And so that was passed on down to the hospital administrator per that DOT resolution. So that's the legal reference that we're using when we process the above step recruitment. And then there's also a four GCA sixty-two twenty-nine point five that speaks specifically for nurses and health professionals. That gives us, again, the authority and more authority, an expanded authority to then recruit nurses and healthcare professionals using that enabling legislation. The additional guiding principles and procedures, you know, that are legal that we use is the Competitive Wage Act of two thousand and fourteen and the Civil Service Commission Resolution that was passed in nineteen ninety-five that further gave some provisions with regards to hiring at a bus stop using the elements of recruitment difficulty and exceptional qualifications. So those are the statutes that we use, that we reference to guide us objectively to then hire individuals that we need for the positions, both in the clinical and non-clinical, at a bus stop.
Is it a practice then of the current board that they do not approve above step petitions and that they are also delegating this to the CEO?
It's that since it was established in two thousand and eight, it's continued. It hasn't been repealed or changed or, you know, discontinued. So yes, that is the resolution that we are using.
Could I just ask the chairman, if she's aware of this resolution and if they concur? I know it was passed before their time, but, that they, are they aware?
Yes, this is Teresa Bisbal, and I'm the chairperson. I am not aware of this specifically, but there, this information, whenever we are presented with making decisions, we assure that they provide us information to make an informed decision. You know, I'm not going to sit here and claim that we know all the rules and the regulations, but we are guided by this team. So not specifically this resolution.
Thank you very much. Please proceed, Ms. Pasadis.
Okay. Next slide. Again, in terms of processing and determining the above step hiring, we use the criteria of critical need, worker shortage, and salary data, which is established in the Civil Service Commission policy in terms of the elements of recruitment difficulty. And also objectively, there is a rating point system that we use in addition to exceptional qualifications. And under exceptional qualifications, there are five criteria. Professional community involvement. This is if the candidate has professional associations or is, is a member of professional organizations. There's growth and development criteria, skills, special skills, agency asset, salary data, and access education and experience credit. You know, the candidate comes to us with these additional credentials, traditional certifications that then just really gives that individual a highly, you know, qualified, special qualifications, exceptional qualifications for the position that we're seeking. Definitely a candidate that we want to hire, and so definitely someone that we would like to offer a bus stop salary so that we don't lose that candidate. Oftentimes, we have individuals that come to our doors. I have a, I had a cardiac thoracic nurse who came to our door, and you know, yes, we want to grab that cardiac thoracic nurse because that can definitely help us in our emergency room, trauma room. So these are the kinds of exceptional qualifications and recruitment difficulty criteria and factors that we use to help us recruit the, you know, resources that we need. Next slide.
Okay, if we could just pause. I, I know you're going to go on to a different topic now, which is the amendment of positions or the creation of new positions, but before we go on, I'd like to give my colleagues an opportunity to talk about the, if we could go to the previous slide, to talk about the recruitment. And my, my first question would be, can you just tell us how you determine worker shortage?
Worker shortage can be either national level or a global level where I can't find, like, for example, a biomedical superintendent, someone with biomedical credentials, experience, and training. We have been having a problem here and also at the national level. This morning, we were talking to a travel company regarding ultrasound, echocardiogram, and radiological technologists that, you know, at the national level, these are really diehard, you know, individuals that everybody's trying to grab, and that's what worker shortage is.
Is there any formal policy adopted and as to how to determine worker shortage?
We just use, go ahead, Tara. I'll let Tara speak.
Hi, Tara Guzman, Personnel Specialist for in the Human Resources Department. Worker shortage is, is basically a shortage of qualified candidates for the position. So if an announcement has been continuous for months or years, we don't receive any applicants, or we don't even receive any eligible applicants, that would constitute as a worker shortage.
And so some examples I mentioned, Madam Speaker.
I want to know the process. So it requires a continuous announcement for at least how many months?
If it's, if we cannot garner any eligible applicants on a regular two-week announcement, a continuous announcement is, is basically saying that we're, we're having a recruitment difficulty for that position.
So two weeks is, is enough to determine a worker shortage?
On a regular basis, every two weeks.
A two-week job announcement is the basic.
Okay. All right. And, and so Lillian, I know at the end of your PowerPoint, you give us the details of the above step recruitments for two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one and two thousand and twenty-two. If I could point the senators there, would you like to report these, or maybe we'll check questions on the process alone, and then she's going to report on all of the above step recruitments that have occurred? Is there any question from the senators, beginning with Senator Nelson, as to, as to above step recruitment?
No questions at this time.
Thank you. Senator Shelton? Senator Tiggy? Senator Perez?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Just a question. What do they can, what is considered excess education and experience?
Well, okay, if I may, this is Lillian. The, for, for nurses, for example, because I'm kind of biased, I'm a nurse. Access education beyond master, beyond bachelor's degree, master's degree, doctorate degree, those are excess education. Any specialty training, like a nurse who is a critical care nurse, those, those are additional excess training beyond a regular nurse's education, educational preparation. Those are the specialties, operating room, training, emergency room, trauma nursing training. You know, those are, now we have interventional radiology nurse training, cardiac catheterization. Those are the highly specialized excess additional training that are exceptional for us to recruit. Does that help?
Yes, thank you for that. So basically, anything above a bachelor's degree, if I can confirm?
The minimum.
Minimum, okay. And then would this go for non-medical staff? How would this apply to non-medical staff?
Okay.
Senator, I, I believe this, Dr. Bidalio, I believe that each position has the minimum qualifications. And if you exceed those minimum qualifications from the education standpoint, that's considered excess education. So the position itself requires a bachelor's, and you have a master's, then that's excess. If, if some of our positions require a master's degree, then you have to have something above that, or work experience that, that is over and above the minimum qualification. That's just the definition.
And can you maybe distinguish between critical need versus shortage? Is there a distinction there?
That's very difficult because we, we feel like every position here is a critical need.
Right.
And we have many that we just can't fill, not because, and again, it's, as much as the finance part of it comes up, and Yuka always wants us to pay attention to that, it's, it's rarely is it the financial picture. It's really that we have no, no qualified applicants. When the HR office gets an application, they have, they go through it first before we even know, and they rate it. And I will tell you, many times, the HR office says they don't qualify for the position. It's just, it's a scoring system that they conduct first. So the critical need and shortage, it's, those are, I think, all of our positions are fairly critical. Some you would say maybe more. I, I don't know.
In the non-clinical arena, the medical coders, those, those are critical need resources. And they're kind of, you know, difficult to recruit because, again, pay is low. There are some certifications that are required in order to really, you know, get those positions filled. So that's an example of a critical need in the non-clinical area because it, it links to our ability to then general, to get the claims processed accurately and expediently in a timely manner so that we can then get those claims to the, the payers, the health insurance, and so that the hospital can get reimbursed for the services that it provides. So that's an example of a non-clinical critical need.
Okay. I appreciate the response, but is it possible to get the rubrics for these? Sure. Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Yeah, I was going to ask if these are governed by rules and regulations that are standard across the board, or if there's just being determinations being made by, by the CEO at this point as it's been delegated.
And if I can also reference you, the Civil Service Commission policy that was established in nineteen ninety-five.
The one you referenced earlier?
Right. Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. What about, okay, Senator Brown?
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I certainly appreciate the outline of the process. I think maybe the bigger question I would have, and probably some of my other colleagues would have, is, is the process being followed? I mean, we recognize, obviously, there are critical positions at the hospital. I'm not going to say they're all as critical. We can say they're necessary in some areas, but not necessarily what you could say absolutely everyone is equal in footing with regards to priority at the hospital. I think the question also is, is the priority of positions? I don't think we're going to be here to argue about those healthcare professionals that provide direct patient care. I think we recognize the support staff that goes along with the hospital. But their question certainly I have with regards, and we brought this up before at the last hearing we had with the hospital administrator about the priorities of certain positions. And we can say everything is a priority, therefore, everything we approve and, and do in a above step recruitment is a priority, and then we all walk away and think, well, isn't that just grand? But I, I don't necessarily see that as the case. We brought that up with regards to hiring of a PIO and above step recruitment in a position. But I think a number of us can agree, there are a number of people on Guam that certainly could have applied and filled and fulfilled that position without an above step. Probably a number of senators could have applied with their credentials. Then also, just in reviewing some of the documents with regards to an evaluation, I'm going to give you an example. Just to look at the PIO position, when we looked at the categories here and, and the point system that was provided, most of us that have run departments are aware of this process, so I certainly appreciate edification for everyone else who is not. But I just want to give you an example with regards to education and experience credit. And this is just an example of the point system. In this particular case, the applicant has a master's degree. And yet, I'll look at another position here that had been applied for, for a And yet I'll look at another position here that had been applied for, for a hospital physical therapist too. And when you look at the access education experience credit that was discussed a little earlier, it says here, this particular individual possesses a doctorate degree in physical therapy. I'm sure we'd all say, wow, that's very impressive, a doctorate degree in physical therapy. But yet I look at the point system, and this individual is only rated from zero to five, the rating is number two. Going back to the PIO position, specialty skills, agency asset, it says zero or one points. The individual is given two points. So I don't know if it's just a miscounting of the numbers, but obviously if they're only between zero and one, it's not possible to earn two, and then total, a total of nine points, which should have represented eight points. I mean, these are just examples that we would be a bit concerned about in terms of how the rating system is applied. And in other cases where people have applied, and there may be several or more, three, four, or more that may have applied for that position, we're told it's a, you know, critical position and that there's limited audience essentially, or participants that want to apply, or applicants that want to apply for these positions. But if you have three or four, that's two or three more than the individual that was selected. So when we look at this being a, you know, saying it's critical, but we can't get any applicants. I mean, you can't get any applicants, to me, if there's nobody applying, or maybe you only have one applying. So I think it's just a question of how the process is being applied, how the process is being evaluated, and how does the public have a sense of comfort? You know, that the, the hiring is going through the proper procedure, because let's not kid ourselves in government of Guam. Time and time again, we've seen examples of how the proper process has not been followed. And right now, there's really no responsibility of HR individuals that actually sign off on these recruitments to hold a certain degree of responsibility, should they authorize hiring and individuals either, for example, don't meet all the qualifications, or there's others that applied that met the qualifications, but were not selected because they were not the right candidate that was desired. And let's not kid ourselves also, that's pretty standard in Guam of who gets what, who gets hired where. And then maybe the, the board needs to revisit the issue, because a month ago, we had a hearing for one of your board members, and yet in questioning the board member about these very issues that we're talking about with regards to hiring and priority of hiring, that board member did not have a lot of familiarity with regards to above-step recruitment and the hiring at, at, at the hospital, which to me is very concerning, because this board member has been there for quite a number of years. You would want your board member to be versed and aware of those issues. And so I don't know if this is something that should simply continue to be delegated to the hospital administrator, or should the board kick that back up to itself, so that there's a better sense of awareness? And certainly when these decisions are made, the public is not hearing about it after the fact, but the public has the opportunity to hear about it when it's happening, especially now that we're requiring the board meetings are published, so that the public and anyone who has an interest will be aware of what's going to be put on the agenda, so if they have any input or desire to listen in, they have awareness of that. So I think those are some of the points. I mean, we can talk about the processes and procedures. Like I said, many of us that have run government agencies are familiar with that. But I, I think there are bigger questions that probably need more direct answers. And I think you probably also need to look at the scoring process to make sure that there's, you know, things are being properly scored. Because I would consider, you know, having a doctorate, you would think that, you know, how much higher can you go? I mean, that, that should have gotten a much higher point than, than two, only number two. And yet a PIO can get a number four for a master's degree. So I think those type of inconsistencies that show on the record are concerning, and that's probably something with regards to board priority, Madam Speaker. And I know I'm going on, but I have a lot of points to raise here that really need to be looked at. Because when we talk about priority, we can say everything's a priority, therefore we, you know, it, it sort of justifies what really isn't. And I think a lot of people, a lot of rational, you know, rational people out there can determine in any structure. There are some positions that are absolutely necessary, and others, you know, some days you can survive without them. It's a comfort to have, but not a necessity. And I think for the hospital right now, we want to see what's most essential. Those are the positions we'd like to see brought forth more directly than these other positions that we want to, we want to cover. I'm sorry, ma'am, I'm almost done. We want to cover with a blanket that everything is equally important. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
We'll have additional opportunity and to talk about details, yeah, further on down. All right. Administrator Posadas, could you please tell us, I'm looking for the HR administrator, I see an acting HR administrator, but the HR administrator, who I've seen his signature in some of these documents, is he present?
No, Madam Chair. He is helping out Public Health.
He'd been detailed to Public Health?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you explain why?
Public Health is in need of help, and so, you know, we are a sister agency, we work together, we collaborate, we provide the support.
They requested your HR administrator?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Okay, so Senator Duñez, on this, on this, if you could please limit your questions to this particular, the stuff that we have talked about so far, which is the criteria for above-step determination?
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. To the CEO, Ms. Posadas, Mike, resolution that you referenced, the 08 resolution, can you provide a copy of that to the committee, please?
Yes, ma'am. I mean, yes, sir. We provided it at the fund drive. It's in the fund drive that was provided to Madam Speaker's office.
So it's, it's been provided to you, but we're going to provide it separately, so for your convenience, we'll put it.
So in that, in that resolution, that, does it, other than the delegation from the board, does it depart from the statutory requirements of following the procedure on the above-step recruitment?
No, it doesn't. It just delegates the administrator to be the one to, with the authority to approve or disapprove any above-step requests.
So all the statutory requirements and everything else are still in place, and so we should see that throughout with regard to reviewing the above-step recruitment that has been approved?
Yes, sir.
Okay. My second question is on, on the second slide. So, so far we see reported 77 nurses, as well as 20 medical specialists vacancies. So the, the discussion then I have is, on this, you have this above-step recruitment. Is, is this, are these vacancies for the reason of nonavailability, or is it a funding issue?
Nonavailability of applicants?
Yes, medical specialists applying for the positions of the current vacancies, as well as, you, you report that you have 77 nurses that are currently serving under the, as travel nurses. So without them, of course, we would be 77 short, is what it looks like to me. So what I'm trying to ask is, is, is it an issue of funding, or is it an issue of availability of nurses and medical specialists?
Availability. There's, there's no availability of.
Nurses.
Okay, and so, and that applies to the, the, the medical specialists as well, that's the 20 vacancies that have been discussed?
Yes.
Yes, it does.
Okay, so that would be the extent of my question for this portion, just because, I mean, if, if we're trying to really understand, of course, we're, we're here because certainly there has been concerns that have been brought up with regard to positions outside of medical specialists and nurses. So I think we have to also establish whether or not we're dealing with funding issues, whether or not we're dealing with availability, whether or not we're dealing with, you know, what the recruitment current status is, so that, just in my humble opinion, that has to be part of the equation in evaluating. Of course, priorities, I, I think it would be pretty clear. Medical specialists, nurses, those providing direct patient care are something that is along the lines of the utmost. But availability and, and recruitment has to be factored in. So I'll continue to listen and see if some of the other slides answer those questions.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Plas?
Nothing at this time. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you very much. Senator Taitikwe?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I had to step out for a few minutes. The 339-page FOIA that was, well, actually pages that you gave on a request for a FOIA to a media outlet. Are these positions all like ready to go, or they all acted upon, and, and are they in the pipelines right now to be approved?
Our, our recruitment and our hiring processes is ongoing every day. If an individual comes to our door saying that, hey, I'm a, you know, I'm a echocardiogram technologist, do you have any vacancy? You know, we give that individual an application. They go on our website, they find an open position. You know, these vacancies are ongoing. And so as soon as we get a candidate who is qualified to, you know, for that position, we process that individual as quickly as we can.
So, so my question again, Lillian, are, are those individuals that you provided the FOIA request to the media outlet of 339 pages, are they in play right now?
Yes.
Okay, so my next question is, based on accreditation, you know, for GMH, is, is the accreditation team, when they come to review the documents, are they particular to the the practice of your hiring? Do they look at, you know, these individuals that we're hiring when it comes to accreditation for the hospital?
Job description is what they look. Competency, background checks, background checks is what they look, but again, unlicensing is what they look at, yes. And so we're going through a new accreditation organization, and so, you know, we'll see what, but first we're doing the self-assessment to ensure that are, we are compliant or non-compliant with the standards and the elements of the, of that organization accreditation. But the CMS is another entity that comes and does our surveys. And so they look at all our, they look at our personnel files, but more so, they look at the medical records, the medical staff office bylaws and policies, and so those are what they, they look at.
Senator, Senator Taitikwe, they, this is William Cando, Associate Administrator of Operations. So they also look at, and in their, in their out briefs, they determine, you know, based on their findings, if we were properly staffed relative to various functions. And that has come up quite a bit, and that's, that's, that also drives our recruitment processes as well.
Okay, and last question, I'm sorry if I missed it, if somebody asked it, but how much information, or how much publicity or outreach do you use for these particular positions?
We use, this is Lillian, we use as much as we can, we've advertised it on our website, we go through Indeed. Yeah.
I'm sorry, what is that? You go in what?
This is Karen Guzman here. We use indeed.com, we use
journals.
Some of the professional organizational websites. What else do we, we put everything.
Do you use a PDN or the post and advertise these?
We do try to do that quarterly.
Oh, only quarterly?
To pay for advertisements in, in the newspapers, yes.
It's every three months, but if these positions are up, wouldn't you be doing that more often than quarterly?
Well, there are some that are continuous.
Okay.
It's only quarterly for the advertisements in the local newspapers.
Okay, okay, thank you, Madam Chair. I won't delay this anymore. Thank you so much, everyone, for your answers. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Senator. Senator Shelton?
All right. Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I don't have any questions at this time. I'll continue to listen.
Thank you very much. Can we, Lillian, if you don't mind, can we skip ahead to the part where you, you report on the above-step recruitments from 2020 and 2021? Just so quickly, just so that they can get an idea how many have been made, and whether they were above. It looks like none of them have been above step 10. Can you confirm that? There have been no recruitments above step 10?
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Can you see the slide?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So this, for fiscal year 2020, these are the above-step recruitment that were completed. And so you can see that, you know, fiscal services, medical services and nursing, these are the positions that we recruited, and as noted, none of them are above step 10. Any questions on that one?
Please proceed. You have several pages, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay, so you divided it between nurses and non-medical, or no? Okay, go ahead.
Fiscal services, non-medical, so yes.
What was the slide? Give a point.
Just the total number.
Okay, there's a previous slide that shows also the total number. Cam, can you go back to the previous, previous one, I think? The hires.
Okay, so.
To go to the 2022 hires, yeah. So for fiscal year 2020, of the total of 225 hires, 154, oh, what was that?
19 above.
Okay, 19 above step. Right, of the total 225 hires, 19 were above step. But of that 225, 154 are clinical, medical, and 71 of those are non-clinical, non-medical.
Okay, 19 above step. I see several are of step 10, nine and eight. Yeah, all right. Please proceed.
And then for fiscal year 2021, we hired a total of 245 individuals. And of that 245 individuals, 175 are clinical and medical slash medical, 70 are non-clinical, non-medical. And we hired how many in 2021 above step? 23. We hired 23 above step of that 245.
Okay, wait. 2021. All right, can you show the positions?
Sure. We can go to the next slide, Cam, that shows the positions for fiscal year 2021. There. So those are the positions that we hired at a above-step process. And again, none of them are over the step 10.
All right, at step 10, we have a management analyst for, management analyst for, program coordinator for, hospital staff nurse to clinical level two. Those are all at step 10. Okay, please proceed.
So for fiscal year 2022.
Wait, there's one more page for 21.
Okay, all right. Yeah, so that's just the second group of above step, to a total of 24 above step.
All right, so and on this page, we have data processing supervisor at step 10, and a speech language pathologist at step 10. All right, and the list for 2022?
For 2022, of the 29 that we hired, 18 are for clinical slash medical, 11 are non-clinical, non-medical. And of the 29, four were above step. Two are techs. And I can't remember, a hospital marketing communications director and a management analyst too.
All right, and of this list, I see the operating, operating room technician. Two of them were hired at step 10, and a management analyst too is hired at step 10 as well. And the hospital marketing and communications director hired at step seven. All right, that's for FY22.
All right.
All right, now you have said that your above-step recruitments are all in conformance with the statute and the rules and regulations, and is there a, and that they're, none of them are above step 10, and that you've complied with documenting the recruitment difficulty and the exceptional qualifications for each of these?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, well, we tried to, you know, put that together in a packet, but in the documents that we received, we did not receive the petitions for all of those. We received the media releases, but not the detailed petitions that I thought was going to go to the board for approval, you know, as, as to those above-step recruitments. And even in the FY22 transmittals so far that we've seen to the legislature, we see the media releases, but not the detailed petitions either.
We do have the, the documents, Madam Speaker. Unfortunately, our Xerox machine broke down. And so we just did not, we ran out of time trying to get that Xerox machine working.
You also sent me a letter that says that all of these documents should be available on your website, but we could not find any petitions on the website. And the petitions is a document that justifies the recruitment difficulty. And the petitions is a document that justifies the, the recruitment difficulty and the exceptional qualifications. And we could not find those on the website either.
Okay. Are those on the website? Yeah, okay. All righty, we'll, we'll work on that, Madam Speaker, to make sure that that is available.
All right, and I'd like copies of them, please. Done.
I think it's part of the board minutes, the monthly board minutes, because that's where it's ultimately approved.
Right, so we also went through the board minutes, and so we see the discussion on them, and sometimes they refer to resolutions, but sometimes the resolutions are not attached to those board minutes, sometimes they are. And, but, but most of the time, the petitions themselves are not attached to the board minutes. And it's the petitions that I'm interested in, because supposedly that's what's in front of the board, when they're considering whether to adopt or not adopt this resolution. Okay, all right, so let's proceed then. I was going to talk about examples, but let's proceed to the next topic, which is the in the higher, creation of new positions.
Okay, sure. Again, we do have enabling statutes that guides our HR team to then create or amend existing positions. And I just want to emphasize too, that a lot of our positions are really old, position descriptions, and so they've, we've had to, you know, spend some time to upgrade those positions and fit with the current times in terms of a hospital, a healthcare organization. And so the guiding and enabling statute that we use is the four GCA sixty-three oh three that, you know, speaks to how and what we need to do to create the position. And that, again, is the, for an autonomous agency, it's the authority of governing body. And we do go through that process with the Board of Trustee HR, BOT HR, governing, that's the entity of that governing body, where we discuss the creation and the amendment of positions. We also have our interim personal rules and regs. And we also use the four GCA subsection sixty-three oh three regarding transparency and disclosure. And so we follow that process. In addition to DOA's Division of Personnel Management procedure. And we follow the training course. We also use an antiquated HAY Group methodology manual, it's a two thousand and eight. So as you can see, it's really an old reference, but that's what we follow, and it needs to be updated. Because it ties to the wage, the salary, the pay plan, that is, again, outdated. Next slide. Do you have any question, Madam Speaker? And that's, that's all I have, that's all we have for the creation and amendment.
On the creation of positions, there are requirements by law, six three oh three D one, that says the petition of the head of the agency or public corporation shall include the justification for the new position, the essential details concerning the creation of the position, and analysis of the similarities and differences between the position to be created and positions listed pursuant to four GCA four one oh one point one D. The position description, the proposed pay range and demonstration of compliance with six three oh one, a fiscal note, as that term is described in two GCA nine one oh one, and any other pertinent information. There's also a requirement that the agency post on the agency's website for ten days that petition, and that the board approve by resolution and file with the DOA and the Legislative Secretary, these petitions and the resolutions. And there's another requirement that no new position be filled until thirty days after filing with the Legislative Secretary. And that notice of the postings of those petitions be sent to newspapers and broadcasting stations. So we've seen these media releases, and they're very, you know, summary. But, yeah, the media release is supposed to point us to your website, where we should be able to read the petitions themselves, where all the justification is made. And that is, that is where, I think we're, we're having a miss here, that we were not able to locate those petitions on the website. And again, the ones transmitted, only partially, parts of them have petitions, some don't have any petitions attached to them as well. Same thing with the resolutions that we found. So.
At the BOT, Madam Speaker, at the BOT HR Subcommittee, all of that is communicated, all of that is processed and provided and discussed and, you know, even debated, and we get our CFO to provide us with a financial impact analysis. So we go through that exercise at the BOT HR Subcommittee level.
Okay, can you talk about the creation of new positions for, in specific, like twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one? Which positions have been created?
Sure.
Twenty twenty-one, twenty-two.
Give me a minute here, Madam Speaker, I know I have that document, because I requested for it, and so is it fiscal year twenty twenty-two is what you wanted?
Yeah, the three fiscal years, if you've got them available.
Yes, I do, I have them available. All righty, sorry, I'm going through all my documents here, because I know I had it. You gave it to me. No, Christine had it, is it there? Okay. Right, but the position itself. In fiscal year twenty twenty, I know that we created the pharmacy technician supervisor. That was one of the positions that we created, the information, informatics, nurse supervisor. Oh, okay, all right, thank you. Chorionic vascular technician, emergency room technician one and two, telemedicine technician, hospital marketing and communications director, hospital certified nurse assistant one, patient choreo one and two, what we did with that one was we upgraded it, we amended it, and we upgraded it. Director of Healthcare Operations Excellence, the food, food and beverage manager, the clinical nutrition manager. These two positions, Madam Speaker, we, we created it because for the longest time, the dietary administrator that we were trying to recruit, we were not able to recruit for several years. And so what we did was then we split that position into two. One for the food and beverage manager that oversees the cafeteria operations, and then the clinical nutrition manager that oversees the patient dietary services. And then the hospital materials management assistant administrator, the chief of clinical pharmacy, clinical pharmacist, we created in line with the current trend in terms of pharmaceutical services for, in hospitals. The deputy assistant administrator of operations. We amended also the hospital laboratory, flibotomist one and two. We amended the long-term care administrator position, because we could not, and we still are not able to recruit for that position. The assistant administrator of administrative services, we amended. The emergency department technician one and two, we amended, and the medical records quarter one and two, we amended.
Amending, amending is different than creating a new position, right? But the very similar requirements, when you amend a position, you have to give the notice and all of that, and petition to your board? All right, is there a reason why we didn't get lists of those, like we got lists of the above-step recruitment?
We added that, did we ask this, or this is, oh, this is?
Put it in the chat, if one of your staff's able to do that, they could please do that for the benefit of the senators, and so that they could review those new positions that were created. Would you say then that, and we have not received the petitions for those? And I would like to ask the chairperson of the board if, if the board reviewed the petitions themselves, where they justify the creation of these positions and the analysis and all of those things? She's still available? Chairperson of this vote? Or any board members is available? So we're going to get that list from you. And I'll give my, the senator some time to, to look it over. And but you're saying that these were all created pursuant to a petition that it was submitted to the board, and that the, the board passed a resolution for each of those?
Yes, ma'am, it starts out at, again, the BOT HR Subcommittee, then it goes up to the full board.
Okay, all right. Can we talk now specifically regarding nurse pay? So, I, I, in the beginning, you, you said something about a restriction on recruiting above step for nurses, but we saw in your list of recruitment above step about, sorry, let me set this again.
Staff nurse one.
Sorry, that we, so we saw in twenty twenty-six, staff nurse two recruited above step at step ten. We saw in twenty twenty-one, one hospital licensed practical nurse one, five hospital staff nurse two, and two staff nurses all recruited above step, and in FY twenty-two, we saw no nurses recruited above step. And yeah, so I guess I want to know, is this recruitment above step used regularly or not regularly for the nurses, and, and why is that? And, and how, we're recruiting a lot of physicians, non-nurse positions, of course, with above-step recruitment, why are we not using this more often for nurses? Is it because of your salary adjustments? And then we also noticed from some of the documents that we, you know, we see salary adjustments, but most of the salary adjustments are like one step, or the equivalent of about one step, two steps at the most. And so what I'm seeing here is that clinical level one receives salary adjustments at fifty-two per annum to, to, sorry, from fifty to fifty-two thousand per annum, fifty-two to six-nine. We, we saw clinical level two salary adjustment from fifty-six NM four to NM six at sixty thousand, six-five-three. Licensed practical nurses receive salary adjustments from NH one at twenty-seven thousand nine eleven to NH three at, at only thirty thousand per annum. And then, just in contrast, we saw respiratory therapist two, it just from, just one step from M fifteen, sixty-five thousand four-one-seven to M sixteen at sixty-seven four-nine-three. And we saw the data processing supervisor above step at sixty-one thousand seven-nine-six. So, yeah, if you could just talk to us a little bit about, you know, the hiring of nurses, and maybe answer some of my colleagues' questions that were posed earlier. And we have also, I'd like to recognize Dr. Kimoto, thank you for joining us, and, and he also, also put questions on the chat relative to nurses' pay, why is GMH prioritizing administrative pay over nursing pay? Why would the GMH Board of Trustees focus their attention on permanently paying nurses, respiratory therapist, lab personnel, housekeeping staff, security personnel, frontline clinical staff at the ninetieth percentile for hospital pay? There's also a question about how can GMH afford to raise pay for administrative personnel if it's currently paying two-fifty per hour for seventy-seven traveling nurses, and can't afford the budget above step for local GMH nurses who are being aggressively recruited to leave GMH? All right, so just, yeah, if you could, maybe give us some, you know, help us to understand this selective above-step recruitment of nurses, the nurse salary adjustments that you've made, and the, the incentive pay that I know that you have provided at the twenty-five percent, and how this all fits in and with our shortage of nurses, our continued shortage of nurses?
Hi, Speaker Trelawney, this is Christine Takaro, Administrator of Nursing Services. So we do regularly offer above step for nurses if they have experience and qualify for above step. If they don't qualify, so if they're coming in at entry level, a new graduate with no experience, then they do not qualify for above step. We use a formula to qualify and to determine the step that they are eligible for. So at this time, as a retention incentive, or the retention initiative, we are regularly offering above step for all promotion positions for our staff nurses and LPNs, for our registered nurses and our LPNs.
Can, can you just repeat that, you're offering above step for promotions?
Yes.
Okay, for all promotions, for nurses?
Nurses.
Okay.
So because they have experience, that would qualify them for an above-step promotion. So we're giving about one to two steps, say they have about two, three years' experience, so we, we factor in, we use the same formula to deter, determining their experience for their above-step promotion. It's usually just one or two steps.
Okay, please proceed.
However, for entry-level nurses without any experience, we have to hire them at a step one. And that's what we've been processing in the hiring for nurses.
All right, and so before the promotions, are they entitled to incentive pay?
Yes, all nurses are entitled to different incentives. We do have our work differential right now, which is the twenty-five percent. That was the most recent incentive. And then, per the Recruitment and Retention Law, nurses are paid the weekend differential, the, and the holiday pay, and then all GovWAM employees get the night differential. Oh, and we, and also for the Recruitment and Retention Law, we get a certification pay if they have a national certification.
All right, examples of that include?
Examples of that, if they're certified in the operating room, and they're practicing in the operating room, they get the fifteen percent certification pay. If they're a critical care certified nurse, or an emergency room certified nurse, nationally certified, then they, they are eligible for the fifteen percent certification pay.
OBGYN.
Same with OBGYN and different specialties for acute care nursing.
Do you have nurses who are certified but are assigned to areas that they're not certified in, so they're denied that certification pay? I, I think I received phone calls regarding that.
We have one particular individual.
There was one particular individual who used to work at the correctional facility, who was certified in a correctional facility
Practice.
Practice, and then was transferred over to acute care, who is not eligible to get the certification pay.
Per the law.
Per the law. Everyone else, their certification is related to their area of practice, yeah.
All right, are any of these pay adjustments temporary, or are they permanent? I, I know a promotion should be permanent, it's classified.
Right.
And the level that they, they get brought in, so what about the other, the incentive pays and the, and the certification?
The incentive pay, the differentials and the certification is only when they work. When they come to work, they get paid those differentials and those certifications. When they're on leave, it doesn't apply, when they're off, it doesn't apply. So only when they work that these differentials are, are applied.
All right, and is it subject to board approval, like can the board take it away?
Sure, if the board decides that it's not an effective retention strategy, then the board has that prerogative to make that ruling, that direction.
All right, I think this was a board res, this is Christine again, Speaker Trelawney. If it was a board resolution, then the board can, has the authority to remove it. But if the differential pay is per law, or passed by the governor, I think
Certification pay.
On the Department of Administration incentive, I think those, the board cannot take away.
Okay, and so for the above-step recruitments, did the board approve this policy of recruiting above step, as you described, Christine?
The board gives the authority to our CEO.
Okay. Oh, it's delegated, that, that's the recruitment, okay, all right. Okay, um, I was, I, I want to ask you in particular examples, but before I do that, I'm going to allow my colleagues to ask questions in general about all these topics that we've discussed so far. And the only other general topic I, I wanted to ask about before I get into specifics on, on some of these lists is the step-to-step promotions or the step-to-step, yeah, upon promotion. Do you have promotions that are more than one step? Well, I'm, I'm talking about Section six-two-oh-six of four G C A says, classified employees in grades A through V who are promoted competitively or by reclassification are temporarily to a higher pay grade shall receive a salary increase closest to a one-step increase in pay grade held prior to the promotion. I just want to know if this, is this what you use for your promotions or are they able to jump more than one pay grade?
For, this is Taryn Guzman, for the promotions, we follow the C W A policy and procedure, which is two steps, and then slot it into the promotional pay grade.
Okay, alright, thank you. Alright, colleagues, so Senator Nelson, if you have any questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I do. What is the funding source for the, the recruitment or the, the above step recruitment and the additional hires?
The funding's for you.
Hi, Senator, this is Yuka. The funding source is all operational funds for all of these.
Okay, and is a G M H A able to sustain itself as we go into perhaps the next three fiscal years with the hiring that they've done and the just, just in general, sustain itself in the operations with all of the practices that have been applied in this oversight?
So far, yes. The biggest impact on our personnel cost has really been the adjustment for the nurses. That was a big amount that was not funded. So we have been using, we have a number of vacancies that provides funding source for the pay adjustments. But for the individual examples we're talking about here, it really doesn't make as much of a difference as the, the differential and the pay adjustment the, we had since August for the, for the nurses. That came up to be about, we're estimating at about six point six million dollars a year for that.
Okay, thank you. And does G D O E, I'm sorry, is G M H A working towards creating a strategic plan on how to be able to acquire locally sourced employees rather than have to do off-island hires?
Absolutely, yes.
What is that plan?
Well, we're working, we're trying to work with the U O G School of Nursing at the same time. You know, we, we'd like for them to bump up the number of individuals enrolled in their program and graduate. You know, right now, they're only able to produce thirty individuals from their B S M program. And fortunately, that all thirty, they have a hundred percent passing rate. And so we're able to recruit more than half of those individuals, although they do leave. But yes, we are really working, putting together a strategic plan. Nursing has come up with a recruitment and retention plan that was just recently approved by the board. And so we're going to continue to, you know, put those strategic plans into effect. We're trying to also entice other individuals on island who are nurses, who are retired, you know, bring them on board. We, we're just trying to promote and market this nursing profession to bring in more nurses into the hospital.
Thank you, and is there any collaboration with U O G for incentives for the students to join the, the nursing program that is available?
I'm not quite sure what incentives the U O G provides other than financial support, financial assistance to help them get their education, nursing education. So, yeah, but we had a meeting last week with the Dean, Dr. Margaret Atori, and we will continue the dialogue in terms of how we can get more nurses.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Pasadas. I don't have any questions at this time, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Nelson. Senator Ty Tugley. Senator Shelton?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you very much, Administrator Pasadas and the team for all of the information today. If you can just continue the discussion that Senator Nelson was just referring to, the strategic plan to hire locally, to recruit locally. I think those are great ideas and efforts that we're, we're pushing for. Can you talk about the, the entry level pay, especially for these nurse positions? And is there a discussion among the administration and the Board of Trustees to increase entry level pay at this time?
Hi, Senator Amanda Shelton, this is Christine Takaro, Administrator of Nursing. Our entry level pay was recently increased with the Department of Administration effort that was done recently. And so fifteen percent across the board increase was done for all staff nurse positions. So staff nurse one and two and L P N one and two. In addition to that fifteen percent increase to their base pay, they added on a twenty-five percent work differential. So every time a nurse is to clock in, they get twenty-five percent of their base pay added to their wage.
To expand on it further, Senator Amanda, the entry levels of a staff nurse, for a staff nurse used to be seventeen dollars and seven cents. With the fifteen percent bump up in their base pay, that went up to nineteen?
Nineteen ninety-eight, yeah. And with the twenty-five percent that, uh, uh, work differential they get when they clock in, that is bumped up to twenty-four ninety-eight for a staff nurse one.
It's still below national average, but at least it's, it's, you know, it's going up.
Yes, and for the staff nurse two, the, the base pay is twenty-four, twenty-one at a step one with the twenty-five percent work differential that goes up to thirty dollars and twenty-six cents.
Okay, thank you very much. And we've heard stories of nurses and other medical professionals from G M H being recruited to work in other institutions, whether it be off-island or here on island. Are there any other incentives that the hospital is offering to our locally hired nurses to, to keep them at the hospital at G M H?
Right now, there isn't, but certainly we'd like to explore some other incentives, some other strategies, such as, you know, education, um, pay for them to get additional certification or okay. Okay, the National Health Service Corps. We're looking at getting the hospital to be designated, to get that designation in terms of National Health Service Corps, so we can then recruit some nurses who need to pay off some of their loans. And so they'll be assigned to GUAM because we are considered a low disproportionate health, I forgot what the term is, but then we can get some nurses and doctors under that national health. Okay.
Okay, and will that program also be available to our local nurses? Or is that just for nurses or doctors coming, being hired from off-island?
Well, primarily, the pool is going to be coming from off-island because we don't have a very extensive pool here on, on island. Even the retired nurses don't want to come and work in the hospital. Or even the D O E nurses don't want to come and work in the hospital. So very limited pool on island. So it's going to be, go ahead, Dr. Harkin.
Hi, hi, this is Jolene Agin. So I just wanted to, to add to that. So the National Health Service Corps will also benefit the current group that's on island. So basically, anybody with the federal student loan will be able to avail, and this incentivizes both on-island and off-island. G M H has also been in discussion with a, another program for physicians. We, we have just completed a conversation with the D O School, looking at two different areas. One is to actually have two slots or a couple of slots into their medical school for GUAM kids. And the other is to build a relationship with the University of GUAM. And they're, you know, they build satellite schools within the United States and send their instructors to, to those locations to teach med school. And so our, our goal is really to try and maximize the resources for our local children of GUAM so that they'll, we can recruit and retain locally.
Yeah, that's great to hear that that would be an incentive offered to our local hires as well. Thank you very much. So what is it going to take for us to get this National Health Service Corps designation?
So we're currently creating a pay scale.
Sliding scale.
Sliding scale that can be offered to our payers. And I don't know if Yuka, you want to add more information? But that's, that's really where we are, where we are. The conversation has happened, the communication is active. And that is our goal, is to be able to be a site with the National Health Service Corps.
Thank you very much. Please let us know when it happens and how we can share the news with others.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Shelton. Senator Paris?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So I guess his question is, so there's only four above step hires for this fiscal year 2022. How much more are expected?
You know, Senator, for, this is Annie, Dr. Berdalio. I, I think, you know, the, the whole issue about above step recruitment really stems from the fact that we're at the two thousand eight wage level. And a lot of, there are a few, a few, and, and to answer Senator Brown's question earlier about excess education, it's not the degree. Because to be a doctor, a medical doctor, I must have a doctorate. That's, that's the minimum requirement. So my medical degree is not excess education for my position. But it would be excess education. So from, for the physical therapists, the doctorate is now a requirement to do clinical physical therapy. So I think that's the distinction, why if you're comparing two separate positions, that a doctorate in one position wouldn't get you any points, but a master's would. But, but ultimately, we recruit a lot of professional, a lot of our, and, and that's why our vacancies stay vacant. When somebody, one is that we all know the labor pool here. We, we, this is a very small community. Every doctor knows every other doctor. If we, even here, there's a doctor that might be out there that might want to come to GUAM. Believe me, every clinic knows who the person is. And we try to recruit or try to make it attractive for them. But, so in order to attract, and I'm talking about facility like the biomedical engineer, if they're making a hundred and fifty thousand dollars at any job in the States and our, our salary is, I don't know, I think it's like sixty-five thousand dollars or seventy thousand dollars, and they're classified positions, those are, they're going to demand, we're never going to fill those positions. And, and that's if we had a big labor pool. We have, even in the States, you can't find a biomedical guy. So there are also shortages just
Where you're going with this. So I guess what I'm trying to get at is, you know, we have a finite pool of funds. And so maybe this question is for the board, how do you decide, you know, basically, you know, which staff are you going to bring in at above step, considering the limited funds? Maybe that could go towards the chairperson or anybody on the board. How is that decision made? Or is that decision made at your level? I don't know who's here on the board.
I think we have the, as board member Sarah Thomas Nettie Don and Goodness Amonte currently present. Would any of you like to answer that question?
Thank you, Senator Paris. Can you all hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, yeah, so as has been said earlier, those decisions are primarily made by the C E O. And, you know, moving forward, there are several things that have been brought up that I think are, are really good things to make sure that, you know, we update that two thousand eight board action and all those other points that were made, some really good points that were made through this public hearing. So I thank you, Senators, for, for convening this oversight and identifying those issues around above step and, and so forth, because they are good points. I think the hospital has also done a very good presentation in terms of justifying why they have done what they've done to get the, the folks in that they need to fill those positions. I can just tell you from a, from a board position, and I've been on the board a little over a year, is that, you know, we have so many needs, and, and especially during the pandemic, critical needs. And we have always been amazed that, that the hospital management has been able to respond to the needs of our community by getting people in. And so, you know, we have a great amount of trust in their ability to do that and have provided them as much support as we can to move forward. You might note that, you know, this board has been pretty active in contrast to previous boards over this year, over the years. And we've tried to stay close to, you know, what, what's going on there and what the needs are and what is it that we need to do to be, to get beyond crisis intervention and into doing things that are proactive and supportive. So this has truly been a challenge. It's, it's one of the most challenging boards I've, I have been on over my forty-year career. And as I said, we're, we're, we're getting to a lot of things that may not have been addressed in the previous years. And of course, from accreditation, as has been brought up, to, you know, number one being health and safety of our patients and our staff. So are there any other questions that you think I might be able to answer or bring to the board for further discussion and attention?
So yeah, maybe I have a follow-up question, Sarah. So you were mentioning the C E O is the one that decides on the hiring. So what is the board's role in?
Could you speak louder, Senator Paris? I can hardly hear you. Thank you.
Sure. So Sarah, you were mentioning that it's the C E O that decides on the hiring. Is that correct? So then, what is the board's role in this, in the hiring practices?
Well, it's the C E O's responsibility to, to, for personnel management. And so she does report to us when these vacancies are filled. If there are any questions or concerns, we will pose them to, to the C E O. So that's, that's basically, that's been our process and our role in this, as I know it, in this last year that I've been on the board. I will say, though, that I would personally like to revisit the two thousand eight board action that was taken and revisit that and see how we can update it and, and see how it's, you know, maybe different than what it was like in two thousand eight. But certainly, I think it's something the board should, should address. Thank you.
Thank you. So, this question's to Lilian. So yeah, maybe if you can clarify, how do you So yeah, maybe if you can clarify, how do you, how do you come upon the decision about, let's say, medical, hiring medical staff versus non-medical staff? Because it seems like there's a lot of, there's a lot of need, right, to increase the the medical capacity of the hospital. How do you come upon that decision?
Okay, I get the request from the department manager with all the justification, and then I meet with the department manager to discuss, you know, really, what are the issues here and what's the justification? And so that dialogue and documentation from the hiring department manager or supervisor. And, you know, it really, I look at the exceptional qualifications. I look at the recruitment difficulty. And so I take those into consideration. I even look at the interview, the responses of the candidate. I read the responses of the candidate. You know, there was one candidate that we were recruiting but did not know anything about HIPAA. So, you know, I review those documents. And I discuss it with the hiring department, and that's how we come to a consensus and agreement that this individual really is going to be an asset to the organization. And so therefore, I think we just, we can certainly justify the above step, whether it's medical or non-medical.
All right, thank you. And so, yeah, I am too concerned about the funding, you know, the future funding capability. Has there been any discussion with Department of Administration regarding the retirement effect, the effect of the, on the retirement with the above step hiring?
The effect of the retirement and the above step hiring?
Would, how would it affect a retirement with above step hiring? Has there any, has there been any discussions with Department of Administration?
We do engage in in discussions with Department of Administration, particularly when our funding is, when we need the infusion of the Medicaid allotment, the pharmaceutical fund allotment. And so we do, but in terms of the retirement, I'm not, I'm so sorry, Senator, I, help me understand.
Okay, so because we're, you know, we're hiring employees.
Right.
That would have an effect on the retirement fund. So is there an effect that's happening? Has there been any discussions with Department of Administration on the increased salary and how that would affect the retirement fund?
We're, we're, we're paying for, we're paying the, we're on top of paying the share of the employee and also the government's share into the retirement. So.
Senator Perez, this is William Kando, the Associate of Ops. So as we go along in this process, of course, we're also working within the framework of the hospital's approved budget. And so as we, as you hire, as we hire, and we see the impact, you know, on the retirement and each employee that we hire, of course, you know, finance is looking at that, and we're staying within that that cap, that ceiling that we're approved at for that budget year. And then, of course, as we transition to the next budget, you know, for the next year, that's, that's all taken into consideration.
All right.
Did we answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Perez. Senator Tack, take me.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, you know, I was looking over some of the documents again, the on the foyer, going back to the foyer. There's a section there that says aid patients courier. What is courier?
Those are, Christine, did you want to? Patient couriers are are staff who will the patients from one area to another area within the hospital, whether it's a wheelchair or stretcher. They transport these patients via the wheelchair or via the stretcher from one area to another. If they need to go to radiology, if they need to go from ER to be admitted to ICU or to the floors, that's what the patient couriers do. They are the transporters.
And and they would be under, would they be under non-healthcare positions? Or would you classify them as healthcare?
They are, they are healthcare because they're required to have BLS. They are required to be certified. Whenever there's a code blue, they're required to go through that training and be certified. So they fall under nursing services and professional support.
In addition, Senator, if I may, they also, oh, sorry, this is Jolene again. They also, when we, when we say they respond to code blues, they actually perform the actual chest compressions on patients. So they are, they are definitely clinical staff. They also do outside transport of patients, hospital to hospital, hospital to clinic. They do, yeah, they transporting Guam behavioral, GRMC, GRC, SNF, those are our patient couriers.
And during the COVID, they transport to the ISAFAC or the Florida Department.
And they help us. This is Christine, Senator Christine Takaro. They, in addition to that, are patients under COVID restrictions, don't have family members and family support here at the bedside. A lot of our patients are high fall risk or restless, and and it helps to have a support person. So if they're, they're within certain risk categories, we assign a patient courier to be their patient sitter to prevent injury or or patient harm. And it is for patient safety. So our patient courier program participates in patient sitters as well.
Greatly appreciate that, a thorough response. I was quite sure exactly what they were doing. But the other question I have is, it was mentioned earlier on the two-step on promotions. An acronym was U C W A. What does that mean?
Competitive Wage Act of 2014.
Okay. And it goes up to two grade. Was the question asked regarding federal funds? Any of these individuals are being hired with federal funding?
No, ma'am. No, Senator.
Okay, okay, that's good. Okay. And it was asked if there is any anticipation of hiring any, any employees to Guam Memorial Hospital using federal funds in the next three months?
Not that I, not that we're aware of.
The only, the only one, this is William Kando against Senator. Federal funds are coming into play regarding the reimbursement for the travel nurses, of course. So there, in that case, yes, there's, there is some reimbursement using federal fund.
Okay, yeah, that's, so the travel nurses are still ongoing, and you anticipate to maintain these nurses? And how much, well, I guess we can't really say, because now we have a new variant we have to look at, but, and there could be another one. So never mind, scratch that question.
Well, and of course, the caveat to that is that they're engaged in direct COVID care.
Great, great. Okay. Um, okay, that's all I have for now. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator. Senator Brown? Oh, sorry, Senator Duenas. There you are, Senator Brown. Please proceed. Senator Brown, if you're there, please proceed.
I just appreciate the response by Board Member Nettie Dogg, because I, I think the main crux, I mean, it's not so much, as I mentioned earlier, with regards to healthcare professionals. I think we can all understand that the demand is there, not just here, I mean, worldwide, for these, these services that our healthcare professionals provide us. So I don't have so much an argument with that. But I do think with regards to these other positions that do, that positions that do leave leeway for question publicly as to whether or not these, these positions are as critical as as they are needed. I mean, I understand the administrator saying, you know, we need to have our PR person here, and there's a need for that at the hospital. But I think most people out there that you would ask would not see that as critical. They would want to have the quality of service at the hospital and the healthcare that's provided there to literally speak for itself. And as I mentioned during the hearing with a board member that we had about a month ago, you know, even your current hospital administrator actually was the PR person back in the day when she was working there. It was very common for Lillian Posadas herself. It could be an accident. It could be whatever the most current issue is at GMH, where there was a need for for public awareness or public announcements or public updates. So she readily provided that, and I think we all had a sense of comfort because we knew her as a, as a nurse professional. We've known her for many years in the community. And she certainly did that on top of her nursing duties, and I think she was to be commended for that. But publicly, how the perception is during this time, when we know there's critical need at the hospital, and the hospital consistently is always in need of additional funds to provide for hiring critical positions, for getting equipment that's needed, medications that are needed. I mean, the list goes on year after year about what we hear, that there's a need for and a need for funding. Of course, there's not unlimited funds, so it's a question of prioritizing. And I think it's a need for the public to have a sense that, you know, key priorities are being met at the hospital rather than above step for positions that most people would say, you know, there's going to be a list of candidates that are available that could provide that type of work. And so when those things happen, it does raise that question. And perhaps that's something that needs to be discussed at the board level so that we don't have board members coming before the legislature for confirmation who are really unaware of these issues and maybe not as sensitized to what the public perception of that is. And certainly for us in our capacities, I mean, we hear these issues of concern. It's hard to come to us to justify, we need to sacrifice funding in other critical areas of the government for GMH once again. And then you have these type of positions that that come into question. So I appreciate Board Member Nettie Dogg, your comments. I hope that's something in your respective capacity that you will look at so that there is greater awareness, greater transparency, and that there's, there's deliberation at your respective levels, knowing that if you are going to do this, it, you know, you've, you've demonstrated your review of that, and the public's more aware of it, rather than at this point limiting it to the hospital administrator. And then it does bring up these, these controversies where most of us, like I said, I've never had a PR person in any key agency I've ever run. I just have never had it. I think that if you're going to run the agency, by all means, while you are busy with the administration of that duty, you know, I've been able to do it, and many others have been able to do it. And there's also has to be some, some, some sense of best fiscal responsibility that while we know we have great need, because there's not an endless supply of money, the people can't afford all the government we want to give them, that these positions are absolutely critical at a time when, when you're not generating enough revenue to cover all the costs that the hospital does have. So I just wanted to relay that. I don't know if Board Member Nettie Dogg has any further comments she would like to related that. If she does, certainly, I'm willing to, I'm here to listen to it. But that's the main point, I think, is is more the focus of this particular oversight hearing for me as a member of the legislature, than going over all the critical healthcare positions that we all know are needed. And we, we, most of us, I'm sure, we all clearly understand that.
Sarah, you're muted. If you could unmute Ms. Trustee Nettie Dogg.
Thank you for those comments, Senator Brown. And I just want to just close this discussion on the board's part by basically saying that, you know, having me on board has been like a breath of fresh air. It's been a tremendous relief to, to the management staff and to the board to, you know, to have someone with her background to be able to to speak on our behalf and to organize our thoughts and that of the management in a way that makes sense for our public to understand. So that's her area of expertise. And like I said, she's really been a breath of fresh air. And so how this all came about is definitely something we can revisit and look at and the processes that were brought up today that were at question. I think that those were all, you know, good observations, and we will make sure, I will personally commit to making sure they are discussed, and we do report back to you and let you know what our discussions have been regarding some of the concerns. But I do want to say that the, that the management staff at GMH has done an incredible job over this last couple of years and has brought our hospital forward. And there's still many things for us to accomplish. But I think that cohesiveness and the the focus has just been something that we can all be proud of on our island and including the work that's been brought forward by me and all the other members in the management team. So sometimes it doesn't make sense to some people, and and I agree with you. You know, people are going to say, why would you hire this person and not hire these two other critical positions? There are so many critical positions, as you have all seen. And, you know, we're dealing with so many challenges, like having a good pull and finding them and training them and and getting them to be on the, you know, be on the same page as our management has been and our board going forward. So there's been a tremendous amount of accomplishment in this last couple of years, and there's truly more that needs to be done. And I really, I really thank you, Senator Brown, Senator Sabina, Speaker, and everyone else that has made great comments, because this is really what we, you know, we need to hear that. We need to hear what those issues are moving forward. And I will make a personal commitment to addressing these and getting back to you. So, Sutu Smasi.
No, I certainly appreciate that. I mean, I'm not, I'm not personality specific. But again, you're going to have the perspective, because the hospital in and of itself is not into itself. I mean, it's, it's a public view of concern, and it may, or whoever could have occupied that position. You have other critical positions, including nurses, that don't start off at this level, that provide direct healthcare, and is particularly a position. I mean, I'm not vying for it. I'm just being upfront with regards to concerns that have been raised that, you know, funding for that could have gone to the nurses. I mean, they're not coming in at these levels of above step and where they're being hired. And there are other healthcare professionals. There's other senior members at at the hospital, I'm sure, that could have also probably could have provided or stepped up to the plate to provide these type of service. Because, yeah, that might be nice, it might be great, you have comfort. But I think in terms of priority, that might not necessarily be the public view, that that's necessarily a priority for them. So I just wanted to bring that point up. And I'm glad, as I mentioned, that you may be looking at elevating it to the board level so that there's more public discussion and transparency, that wonderful word that goes around with regards to this, so that when you weigh that, and certainly when you come, if you come back to legislature, I don't doubt you guys will, asking for more money from the public coffers, that we have some comfort that it's going to justify positions. Because I don't expect running a hospital is ever going to be a position of comfort, just by the nature of the work that's there. So with that, thank you again to Board Member Nettie Dogg, and thank you, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to ask the questions and comment.
Thank you very much, Senator Brown. Senator Duenas?
Sutu Smasi, Madam Chair, and getting back to the issue of direct patient care. And it sounded to me earlier and following on with some of Dr. Arquimoto's questions and others that have been on the chat, that the issue of entry level was a barrier to the above step recruitment, as, and that's what I've been hearing. So I guess between Lillian Posadas and Christine Takaro, my question is then, since we've done this by board resolution that we've followed supposedly all the rules and regulations to transfer that power to the administrator and the CEO, are we also looking at, and it sounds like we could also by board resolution, other than what DOA has done under CWA and other opportunities, to to now do this by board resolution to ensure that we're competitive for recruitment and retention at entry level as well? And can I get a comment on that?
Senator. Senator, this is Christine Takaro. I believe we are bound to hire, if they don't qualify or if they're not eligible for an above step, like with experience. They have to qualify for an above step. We, we can't just give it out to entry level. So for entry level nurses, we have to hire them at step one, right, Taryn? Yeah, all, with all classified positions, we have to start at step one. And we can only give the above step if they qualify for the above step.
Because the way it is, the job description, job specifications for staff nurse one, the years of experience is what is included in the qualifications for anything beyond step one. And like I said, mentioned earlier, if we have an associate degree nurse, because the qualification to move up to a staff nurse two with an associate degree nurse is three years' experience. But if someone with an associate degree comes to our door, has one year experience at least, or two years, we can bring that nurse at a above step of step two. And so because of the two years of experience, same with a bachelor's degree nurse. If that baccalaureate degree nurse has already one year experience, we can then hire that baccalaureate degree nurse at a step two, as staff nurse one. It's still an entry level staff, but is a step two, which is a buzz step, if they have that year of experience.
Right. So I think, I think it's important for us to be clear on that, because, you know, it just would seem. because, you know, it just would seem that that has been discussed numerous times in terms of, because that bumps up the scale by resolution. I know it's been done by resolution for other areas. And you're correct to say that it would be commensurate with the experience and the like. So if that is a barrier, it's important for the legislature to understand since it's very clear that board resolutions have been adopted and this authority has been transferred, that we, if we, in the event, we constantly need to go back to Department of Administration under that rule. Because obviously, the greatest availability possibly of nursing is so competitive would be at entry level. So if that continues to be a barrier, I think it's important. Because as I said, it's been demonstrated quite, you know, quite readily here that the board resolution process is the, and the CEO certification is the mechanism. But I certainly just wanted to make sure that we all understand that so that if that continues to be a barrier, that would be the approach from the legislature. That's all I have on that one, Madam Chair.
We also use the option of a graduate nurse position. These, again, are individuals who complete the BSM program or ADM program, waiting to take the ENCOLX exam. We can bring them on board as a graduate nurse. But again, the salary for that is not that attractive. But at least we have that. But if that can get changed in terms of the salary for a graduate nurse, you know, that would help. And we are looking also, we need to really do a wage study. Because right now, it is that wage that we have right now is so old. That needs to be reviewed and, you know, amended, upgraded to the current trends of salaries.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I think that's the language that the people want to hear because we're talking about the wage study at the critical level. And, you know, we're going to continue to evaluate and, you know, we'll all continue to, you know, evaluate the priorities. But exactly, and thank you for saying that because I think the board would probably want to chime in on that as well. But certainly, I mean, that's, I think that's what has caused this kind of friction, if you will, is sort of that, you know, that alacrity and wanting to get to making sure that balance is there. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Senator Duñez. So am I understanding correctly that the nurse pay adjustments that were made by the Department of Administration did not bring the pay scales up to current levels? Dr. Bernalia said the pay levels are at 2008 levels, but we know that they were just adjusted in a pay compensation study for nurses. So if you could just clarify those two things, we did have a study for nurses and, you know, what kind of levels, you're saying they're still not up to the correct levels at DOA?
I, Madam Chair, I think the, I think the total wages of hospital workers, again, we follow the Department of Administration other than our healthcare staff. So our nursing staff gets your, the nursing pay plan that was passed specifically addressed nurses. There's a lot of clinical staff that didn't qualify for that incentive pay, even though they are at the bedside doing support clinical care because they don't have an RN degree or they're not defined in the law as a healthcare professional. So I think we are looking actually, you know, the HR people have been working all year and it got interrupted by COVID to review all of the hospital positions and redo our personnel rules and regulations because we're not like the rest of the government service.
Yes.
Position. So I think that, and then the wage study, I think, will affect that. The nursing staff and the professional staff have always had the option because we don't fall under, at least the professional medical staff, we don't fall under the, even the classified service. So we can always hire physicians at whatever rate they make us pay them. The limiting factor is when we come to you at the legislature and say, hey, we need $15 million for medical contracts. The limiting factor is if you can't certify that we have to pay the guy. But those are all competitive wages that change every month, every six months, especially during the pandemic. So I think that's, we don't sacrifice that because we can't run a hospital if we don't hire physicians. And if they need to make that much money for them to come, we have to pay them that. We don't, there's no board resolution or not. Those positions always, they're so underfilled that we always are able to somehow manage to hire them.
Thank you. No, I understand that the hospital's working on a wage study for all of its employees or some of its employees, but I'm in particular the nursing pay. I want to go back to your statement that we are currently at 2008 levels. But is that after the pay study, the wage study that was done by DOA for nurses in particular?
Well, I think if you add the 15%, we have to give a 25% incentive on top of that because that 15% was across the board to all nurses in the government. And I think that Christine can say that, she said it went from 17 to 19. And I think the national average is somewhere in the.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six dollars. So our entry level nurses are making 24, but that's only because we added a 25% incentive for them to be hospital nurses.
But that's staff nurse two.
No, that's a one.
No, that's, so that, so I think, so no, the 2008 wage, I think, applies to the other.
Okay.
Everybody.
You're saying we're at about 24 versus 26, right, for entry level? And that when you give the differential, it brings us up to pretty much, you're saying, the national average?
No, still below 24 with the 25% incentive hospital nurse pay.
Okay.
And the national average, I believe, at entry level is 26.
Okay, all right. So we end up at 24, even with the pay study that was done and that requires your 25%. Okay, got it.
And may I say one more thing? I think from the above step recruitments, if you look at their pay at their national average, they're way below the national average. It's, we're not even close to paying those positions that we did hire at above step anywhere near what they should be, what the national average for those positions are. So again, it's not like anybody's being overpaid. I, I, I think.
It seems like the pay study then did not sufficiently address that type of thing because, yeah, we shouldn't end up that way. But I'm looking at your chart of above step salaries versus national average for all the positions that you give above step. And some of the nurses get closer to the national average versus some of the others who are like half of the national average. Yeah, it's really a wide-ranging thing. The, there's one here for, it says general accounting. That's, looks closer to the national average. But anyways, yeah, I haven't had time to really analyze this. But so my question is, was about the pay study. And then, and then, of course, we have a list of the positions that were recruited above step. And just wanted to find out. So we say they're recruited above step because they're difficult to fill and/or they're, you know, extra qualified. And, you know, we have positions like program coordinators and employee development specialist two, management analysts, planning specialist. And all of these, especially like program coordinator, the program coordinators are making more than any of the above step nurses here. And the salaries, yeah, they're, they're very disappointing even after above step that, yeah, many. So these positions that I listed, they seem to be, you know, either, well, for sure above the LPNs. The LPNs are only making about $30,000, I think, according to this. And the, so Dr. Akimoto put on the chat that LPNs get $15 per hour at GMH and the national average is $18 per hour. That nurses are getting $19 per hour and the national average is $30 per hour. And I'm not sure, you know, the accuracy of that, but, but let's just say we're not getting the national average, right? That's the point. And I agree with him and I agree with you that, yeah, if the study didn't bring us up to the national average, then it needs to be redone. Did GMH have input in that study? Because it's supposed to be, you know, based on surveys of the agencies, just like all wage studies, right? And are you pushing for that to be redone, the nurse pay study?
Hi, Speaker Tlahey, this is Christine again. Just to clarify, staff nurse with the DOA nurse wage increase, nurses are now getting $19.98 an hour for staff nurse one, plus the 25%, which brings them up to $24.98. And that does not include any of the other incentives on the nurse recruitment or retention law. For the LPN one, the starting wage with the increase from the DOA is $15.43. 25% work differential brings that up to $19.29. And this also does not include the other incentives that are in the nurse recruitment and retention law.
Okay, great. All right. Then that, that sounds much better, right? If these are the correct national averages, 26 and 18?
Yeah.
So, but yeah, again, so we're looking at it, you know, non-medical eyes looking at this and these other, these other positions that are being recruited above step. For, for example, program coordinators, management analysts. Yeah, my question is, you know, I want to see those petitions to see the justification of how these were difficult to find, right? Like, and I did see at least one where there was more than one applicant. There were four qualified applicants and yet it's still recruited above step as if it's not difficult to find. There's four qualified applicants, right?
Right. But they're exceptional qualifications is what we, what we factored in.
Yeah, but that brings you, you know, to above your, your, your pay scale. And is that really necessary, I guess, is the question, right? If you can hire a program analyst that will meet all your qualifications at the level that is already set, yeah, why, why do you need to hire an exceptionally qualified one that, that's not going to get you any further than what you've, you know, already put in your job description? That, I guess that's the question for me, right? You're not changing the job description, you're changing just the pay, really.
But we're also looking for best talent. And so that's why we, we have this process. You know, we're not just going to pick someone because, you know, this person is willing to accept a low salary, but yet really not the best talent.
Well, the job specs are supposed to take care of this so that it's a merit system, right? And it's competitive and that we don't get, how do they call it, subjective? You know, we mean objective as much as possible based on the qualifications that you have listed in your announcements and if they are able to meet that, yeah. Can I?
Right.
There's some other question, but I wanted to allow, oh, okay, yeah. So for example, well, first, can you tell me, do you have a PIO on staff right now?
No, ma'am, we have a communications and marketing director.
Okay.
In fulfilling those duties as PIO plus more.
All right. So the PIO position that is just going to remain vacant, that's the plan?
Well, we're not going to, you know, if there's no need to fill that position right now because we do have something at a higher level of performance with more qualifications and getting the job done, then, you know, but we'll revisit that later.
So that was on continuous for a while. I saw it beginning on January 6, 2021. The pay grade for the PIO was at grade M. Step one was $40,762. Step 10 was $55,958. The, it looked like, you know, it got continued. But so I gave the minimum experience and training. And I know that the hospital has had PIOs over the years in the past. So you're confirming that this is no longer open?
Well, not pursuing to hire for that right now.
Okay, but it's, all right. And then, so prior to the creation by the board or the approval of the board to create this position of hospital marketing and communications director, there were no applicants for PIO?
Because we weren't really advertising for it. We weren't recruiting for PIO. That position was in existence, but we just, it wasn't funded, is what my understanding. It wasn't funded and we weren't actively pursuing for that position. The communications and marketing position was brought to the table even before the COVID and even before I came into this position because the previous board wanted to have a communications and a marketing director, but we just did not, you know, act on it. We just did not put that as our priority. So that was something that was already approached and brought forth by the previous board of trustees, you know.
It sounds like, though, that they didn't have the opportunity to discuss the PIO position itself. Okay, so where's their, the person who's currently in the hospital marketing and communications director position, that position was created and then a few months later, it was, the person was recruited above step. So this, we created a position and set a salary and then this, this person was recruited above step. But prior to that, it looks like there was an above step recruitment issued for the same applicant to be hired at above step pay grade O, step 10 for the position of management analyst. Was that person hired in that position as well prior to being hired as hospital marketing and communications director?
If I may clarify, Madam Speaker, when we decided that we will need to have a media person so that I don't have to be the one responding to all the media inquiries, the only option we had at that time was to, because the position was already established, was a PIO. But we also recognized that we needed someone to do more than just a PIO. So we used the management analyst position and we upgraded it to then include a lot of the communications and media releases and media responses. So in our urgent need to fill that, those duties and responsibilities, that's what we hired that individual to that position. And to quickly hire that individual so we don't lose, you know, we brought that individual on a limited term appointment because that was the fastest way to bring that individual in, to help us out. Prior to bringing on that individual, we had a group of talented women helping us out on a volunteer basis to help us with the communications and whatever other information that we needed to do internally and externally during the COVID situation that we were in. At the same time, we were moving along to say, okay, let's hire someone in. Let's bring in someone on a more, you know, steady and permanent basis. And so that's what we did, recognizing that, you know, really the scope of work of that PIO was really more expansive, more comprehensive than we needed. And in response to the board of trustees' request for us to hire to create the position of a communications and marketing director, we then moved along with that. And so that's what we did. We created that position, we announced it. And so interviews were conducted and we selected the best candidate, the best talented individual with the exceptional qualifications, again, at a above step. So does that, I mean, are we wrong for doing that? I don't think so. You know, again, we were functioning what's in the best interest for this organization, particularly going through COVID. You know, we needed the talent, we need, I needed someone to be going out to the media.
Sure. So there was a position, so the PIO was announced from January and then there was a specific ending of that announcement in March. Otherwise, it was continuous announcement, it was posted on your website and the salaries were set. Then there was a hiring of, you're saying, a management analyst for, to, to do the job of, of the current hospital.
Plus more.
Director, that, did you then amend the marketing and, I mean, sorry, the management analyst position description?
We expanded it. We included more of, you know, the communication.
We expanded it. We included more of, you know, communications and the marketing, communication primarily was what we did.
Okay. And so, all right, would I find those documents in the packet that you gave me? That, that revised duties of the management analyst?
If it's not there, I have a copy of it. And so we can provide that to you.
Yes. And so then, so after the closing, the PIO announcement on March 23, 2021, the Board of Trustees created the position on April 28th for this marketing manager with the different qualifications and the different salaries. And in this one, instead of requiring a bachelor's degree, they required a master's degree. There were some other differences also in the scope of work. Yeah. I'm, you know, I just, you know, the merit system is very much supposed to be not that we create positions for certain people and that we create positions. It's like procurement of supplies. We create the description of the supply we want as accurately as possible and we get the cheapest supply that we can get that can fit that description, fit that need. And I think merit systems also work very similarly where you get, you know, your position description, if it's accurate enough, it's supposed to be able to meet your need. And, and the salaries are supposed to, you know, correspond to that. And I can see above step recruitment for those hard to fill. I mean, and we have to adjust our salaries as we go along, which we have been trying to do and to authorize. Yeah, but I, I just don't want it, you know, it just seems peculiar to, to me that we have the ending of a PIO and then we open a totally new position, higher salary, and then we recruit above step there to, I don't know. It's, I can see why the media and some of the public have really questioned this. And unfortunately, yeah, I'm still, I, I still want to look at the documents myself because I haven't received all of them. So I'm going to wait before, you know, I make any conclusion, but I do want to see all those documents. I would also like to recognize before we close that, so there, Dr. Kimoto was here, but unfortunately he left before I could ask him if he had any additional questions. There, there were a couple others here. And then I know that Commission, I mean, Trustee Almonte would also like to say something and maybe I'll allow my colleagues to also, if they would like to have any further questions. Or, so you have a brief question, Senator Taitikwe? You're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Lillian, I am looking at your PowerPoint presentation on the above step recruitment. And then I am looking at something that was released on March 17, 2021. So I'm assuming this is 2021. It says petition for amendment of position. And this is for emergency department technician one. And it says step one, $26,000 PH, step 18, 46742. Does this mean that you have offered this position? Or is this just explaining from one to 18 and the highest being 18? That's how much this emergency department technician one is going to receive?
Can, can receive. That's the range of a salary that the emergency technician one. We amended that emergency room technician position based on the old qualifications. We upgraded the qualifications. We included the qualification, the skills in terms of doing an EKG diagnostic, when the doctor orders for a 12-lead EKG, that emergency room technician can perform that assignment. And so that was one of the amendments for that ER tech. One, distinction between ER tech one and ER tech two. And it was also to give the ER techs a not work mobility opportunity. Because at that time, we could only hire an ER tech one and that's it.
In your PowerPoint, okay, thank you so much. In your PowerPoint presentation, can you tell me where this emergency department technician is recognized in your PowerPoint presentation?
It was a, it was an amendment. Yeah, it was an amendment to the position that we did not recruit for it in terms of a buzz step, but it was amending the ER tech one and ER tech two, giving it a distinction in terms of what the skills are required for those two positions.
Okay, thank you. And thank you, Madam Chair. Just curious to find out, you know, so these are amendments as nothing to do with actually hiring an individual. It's just to be able to increase this, and it's step to steps 18, you said? That's the highest?
On the pay scale, that's the highest pay rate, pay scale.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, okay. Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator. Is there anyone else who I haven't recognized who wanted to speak? All right, Trustee Almonte?
Good day and good evening, Speaker Terlahi and senators who are in this oversight hearing. First of all, I would like to take this opportunity to thank all of you for this opportunity for the GMH administration to talk about their hiring practices, recruitment and retention. And as a nurse myself, I worked at GMH for 20 years and retired there for 13 years. I can feel for the administrators' passion about nursing, recruiting nursing, and also the other medical professionals who are working at the hospital. And I would assure you, just like what Trustee Sarah Neditog said, that we will bring all this discussion, your concerns, your questions to the level of the Board of Trustees meeting. And we will provide you with the best answers coming from the Board of Trustees as well as the administration. And I commend the administration, management, Lillian Posadas' team for their hard work, especially during this pandemic, this two-year pandemic. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much, Trustee Almonte and Trustee Neditog for being here with us throughout this entire hearing. Very much appreciate that. And to those who appeared earlier, I want to thank them as well. I want to thank my colleagues especially for their perseverance. I know these hearings get a little long, but I want to allow everyone to ask their questions and speak. And of course, I want to thank GMH for their presentation, their hard work. It's very obvious, you, you did a lot of work to put these PowerPoint presentations together. I'd like to take a deeper look at them and, and get some of the other documents that were not provided to us prior to the hearing and to review the documents that were provided to us just last night. So unfortunately, we couldn't do a very thorough review of them, but we are continuing to do that. You know, the goal, of course, and we share your goal, is to take care of longstanding issues that GMH has faced in regards to filling critical needs. And, you know, we see critical needs as these medical positions, right? The nursing positions, the physicians, we, we try to hold physicians accountable and they tell us there aren't enough of us, you know, sorry, there, yeah, we're all gonna quit. So we want to see these monies being prioritized to, you know, fill these specialists that we need on Guam, filling the nursing that we have needed for years and years on Guam, and that unite all our efforts. And so we just want to make sure that above step recruitment for other types of positions does not detract from our ability to recruit these critical care, patient care positions as, as are needed. And again, I'm saying from a lay review of the list of, of positions that are being recruited, you know, they're not all medical, they're not all, I mean, recruited above step. Yeah, I, I want to look at the documents, how they justify critical need for those types of administrative positions versus medical positions like nurses. So we will look at the documents that you provide, particularly the petition. And I'm asking the trustees to also look at these petitions very carefully. You know, if you have four applicants, is there really a critical need for that? Or, you know, or can we just do regular competition, right, for that position? And all of this affects morale, of course. And so we want to improve morale by improving salaries where they are necessary, but we don't want to also, you know, give exorbitant salaries where those are not critical because that affects morale as well. So anyways, I, I do want to thank you, Administrator Posadas, for all your work, for your PowerPoint, for all the work that all your team has done and has continues to do, not just for today's hearing, but for all the hearings that we have had. We've actually brought this issue up in prior hearings regarding the hiring of medical personnel and those parameters. And, and of course, we want to thank you for all the work that you continue to do as, as doctors and, and nurses and entire staff of GMH to improve our patient care. Senator Taitikwe, did you want to say something? Yes?
As I promised, Madam Chair, when I was on the radio and some people were talking or providing messages through Facebook, that I would mention this to the hospital and those who are there today. It was from an individual, I'm not going to give a name, but she writes, "GMH needs to better housekeeping. Patient services are horrible. My mom waited on the side. The ultrasound department, after they were done, waited an hour until I asked someone passing by and said, when are they returning her to her room? She waited over an hour in the hallway. Ceiling had dust and cobwebs. She has passed away. Every time I look at the hospital, I get very emotional. Fix the hospital." I promised I would mention it during the public hearing today, the oversight. And also I know Senator Paris and I were chatting back and forth on other reports, Madam Chair. And I'm asking if they can also provide those amendments to positions that I spoke about earlier, asking about that and also a report to show us the, those that created any, any positions, a creation of new positions. So if they can put in that power, like they did the PowerPoint presentation, which was done simple to, to read and understand. I greatly appreciated that PowerPoint, but it, it did lack some of their information that's critical. Again, amendments, it's on the chat right now, Madam Chair. Thank you for allowing me to read a statement made from, from the public.
Thank you. So we are requesting for the detailed list of the created or amended positions for those time periods, as you did for the above step recruitments. That would be greatly appreciated. Thank you. And, yes, and, oh, actually, they did give to us the list of creative positions and we put it on the chat. So we will make sure that you all get that. So the CEO read off the list and we have it in writing now. We will provide that to you. But if you want to include the details like you did on these other charts, that would be very helpful, I think, and much more efficient. And again, yeah, so we, you know, sometimes the public is told that, you know, we can't hire nurses because we don't have the money or we can't hire the specialists that we need because we don't have the money. And I think it's clear from today's hearing that, you know, you can hire physicians at the salaries that are necessary. You can, you know, we are making headway in getting the nurse salaries up. And I'm very grateful to you for your creativity in finding other ways to increase salaries for hospital nurses. I think that should be the priority. And I want to thank you for that. I'm very supportive of your efforts to give incentive pay for those who work at the hospital. Our only public hospital, especially. And so, but yeah, again, so we just want to make sure that with our limited finances that we are prioritizing our money where most critical need is. Again, thank you to everyone for your work and participating in this hearing. And good luck to the rest of you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
Good night.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Christmas, everyone.
Merry Christmas.